Alan, we go to training first.
Oh, okay.
So we don't, we don't start the...
Do you want me to scare you?
The camera's on?
Yeah.
It's open to training.
They're not going to show. Good evening, Council and Mayor. Thank you for letting us do this presentation tonight on Granicus finally. We're, we're kind of happy. We've done a lot of work here as far as the city team. First of all, Granicus is electronic agenda management solution that creates more efficient agenda routing, unlimited data storage, Microsoft integration for easily importation of files, generates and publishes minutes and seconds, not days, and it's iPad compatible, live streaming on and on-demand meetings, and easily finds items by using keywords, which we're not able to do so now when someone is able to look up, wants to look up something. It migrates our historical data, which is really good for our boards and commission training because now when someone leaves a boards or a board or commission, we no longer have their historical information. We have a proprietary program, so it doesn't allow us to do that, but Granicus will allow us to keep that information on file. It's a touchscreen voting and easily manages boards and commissions, as I said again, and appointments. So what I want to do today is introduce Joe Palladino. He's in from New York who represents Granicus. He's their training expert and he's been very patient with us for the last seven months or so. So we've had weekly, if not bi-weekly, meetings throughout the last seven months with many members of the city. And I would be remiss if I didn't call up Ken here from IT, Ken Cramens, and Catherine Whitesill too has been very hands-on for this project all along. So thank you both. I appreciate that very much. So what we're going to do now is just give you a basic lesson on how to vote. That's it. Okay? We're going to have several of these 20-minute sessions over the next two months, so we will hopefully go live. If not in June, it will be in July. So we're going to, we do have webinars available and we've had all of our webinars, our training has been captured through our MarCom department. So we have all the actual training available. And of course, we have Joe's personal number, so we call him at any hour of the day. So first of all, Joe, why don't you come up and I'm going to have the, our coworkers in the clerk's office kind of stand behind you in case you need some help in logging on, logging off, that sort of thing. And do you want to say a few words about Granicus before we get everyone set up and trained?
Sure, sure. So just want to say thank you to the city for giving us the opportunity here. It's been a journey, as Alan said, over the last few months and we're to a place, planning has been using us for the last couple of meetings and things have been going pretty smoothly for them. So I wanted to obviously introduce you guys to the process as well. And we'll look at a couple of things today, just a quick voting sample on how to vote through the We Govern app on the iPad and then give a quick tutorial on the web portal as well, which is another option for you guys to access the agendas and take your own notes on there as well moving forward.
So when you arrive at the day, this is the screen you'll see. And we already have one council member that has asked to speak, so. We haven't gotten that far yet. So what we're going to do is just, you know, just like the mayor makes some comments, when we first get up there, we say the Pledge of Allegiance, so we say our prayer. And then the first motion would be, the motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. So what happens is Tracy will set the agenda item. And then this is a little different here because it has a motion and a seconder and there's no way we can remove this from the program. I will say move to vote. And I'll explain this after we get through that first one. Mayor, you don't vote. I'm going to let you be the last one to vote. Then I'll explain that later too. So we need a mover. Anybody does make any difference and...
I'm a shaker. Is that okay?
I'm a shaker too.
I said that the other day. Giving this presentation to the commander's office. So anybody can be a mover and anybody can be a seconder. And you can change your vote. This just gets it to the vote.
Parting's favor.
Okay? So you may, this, this just says, okay, I'm getting this, you know, to a voting status. Okay? Now, then I'll say place your vote. And everyone will place the vote. No, you won't. And they'll be able to see.
No abstain.
You're waiting on you. So you're, so you vote and then you'll end the vote.
I did no and abstain.
Well, you can only do one. Now, before the mayor, we have to decide, the mayor may say are all votes placed or something, because you may have one more opportunity to change your vote. Once the mayor hits his vote and then in vote, your vote is on the record.
So, so Alan, yes, so there are, there are a few scripts that we could, that we could use. We need to probably build those.
Yes, sir.
Yes, so there's a, there's a way that you can do it. Because the question will be, if any member would like to change their vote.
Place your bets. I'm sorry.
And then if all members voted, then clerk closed the roll. And I'll, I'll, so we'll figure it out. Because, I mean, I'd rather to have some instructions to the council members and make sure I got affirmative.
Everybody's done theirs.
You want to change it or close the roll? All of those. So we'll, we'll...
And as I said, we're going to have four or five 20-minute sessions between now and when we go live. And so we'll, we'll have tons of questions to answer after this.
After you do that vote, we had one occasion where council members changed their mind about a vote after the vote. So even though you end the vote, can, if somebody changes their mind after that, can they?
So Bernard, we did that before. So it would be a motion to reconsider the vote that, and I call the, whatever the ordinance is.
Okay.
And that needs to be, that's a vote. Even to recall it is a vote. So yeah, to recall is a vote.
Okay.
And the person voted on prevailing side would have to, you know...
Yeah, it was. I remember that. It was that, yes.
Mrs. Graves have to vote on prevailing side. She moves that we reconsider whatever it is.
Okay.
Someone has to second it.
Okay, yeah.
And, and the motion is, is to recall it up first.
Okay.
And then...
And then re-vote. Okay, okay.
And so I'll, we'll, we need to script that out. And then I'll make sure that in front of your place setting, you will know, not that we'll make a habit of, habit of doing that, but you have it.
Just in case. That was code.
And a couple of things, we'll see that better.
We're going to go through one regular agenda item, so you'll see how that would perhaps work in that case much better than this dispensing with minutes. And then what will happen is behind you, you'll have a, an 80-inch screen that's up there. It's not working tonight and it will show your votes all at once.
Okay.
It will not show you individually voting. It was, once the mayor hits vote, in vote, then this screen will pop up so that everyone will be able to see how people voted for this particular ordinance or item. Okay? And then what we'll do is just go to a regular agenda item. And so I'll, the, the mayor will ask me to read the ordinance, which I will. Then he will call for speakers, and she still does. And the only thing that will change is this is a point where the mayor will have to ask you all as council members, do you have any questions, concerns, comments? So then after that, then we'll go in, I'll read the, the dispatcher, the charter requirements reading ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. That's the new thing we're going to read. And then we'll have to decide whether you move to vote. That's where the mover and the seconder comes in. You place your vote and then it's adopted. However, if it's somehow or another, someone decides afterwards, well, why, you know, we have to go through this process and then we have to make several changes over here. And it's not that you can just, I mean, we can go back and clear the vote, but then you have to add different ordinances in and stuff at the last minute of the motion.
So like when people come before us and we make changes to proffers or things like that from the floor, that...
We have to make that note in just because the minutes, we're doing the minutes on the fly right now.
Okay.
And then, you know, we can go back and clean them up later, but right now we're trying to get as much in as possible.
Okay.
For this system to work the way it's supposed to work.
Okay.
And, you know, we will note that because oftentimes Mr. Smith will...
Right. The, the changes made at the floor. Right. Okay. Okay.
So why don't we go down to another item so you can see?
Item you want?
Just go down to another one, just set it so they can see where we are in the agenda.
The rule is to not change anything. Okay.
In order to call.
We're doing...
We're just going down, I'm just letting you see how the, the information works.
Sure.
Okay. So this is what we're voting on, this ordinance right here.
I'm sorry. What are we doing?
An ordinance to amend and reordain?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so how do I, let's just say I want to say. How do I go?
So they hate to hear.
But I'm saying no, but how do you?
When it comes up.
So initially, there's a mover button that pops up. Once somebody hits it, there's a seconder button that pops up.
So Tracy has set us up to see that on our screen.
But so the...
Does it correspond to the...
Yeah, at the top, it doesn't say R1.
Is it supposed to say?
But you can see all of the ordinances on there.
A mover and, and second up here?
It says a right mover.
So you have to be paying attention. You can't be on your phone. You're playing a...
Yeah, you have to look, you have to watch.
I know, but where is it before some of them?
Always watch the blue bar.
When it comes to mover and, and second.
But that would say R1 either.
This is I S one.
Was that real or is it coming up?
I know, but that's what I'm saying, up here.
Well, we're going to have, this is because that's...
Oh, I didn't see it.
To uncodify and see this is a direct covering system, so it's, I see what you're saying. We just need to do it.
Like with both of them on there, it's not, if it was just that one, then the legislature...
I X means it's number nine on the regular agenda. It's a left-hand column, left-hand map.
So just to let you know, Mr. Smith, you can see everything you're seeing except they don't have voting options.
It's nine, one, but one is the R1.
Exactly.
Nine means regular agenda.
Okay.
Okay, now, I second this, but it says my vote is a second, so what does that?
Speaker, great speaker.
He's voted in front of us.
Between votes.
No, I did, I seconded it. That was second to vote on it, not second to agree to it.
First speaker is Andrew McCullough.
With it, you can change, that's what I was saying, that's what you got to look at.
Blah, 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 blah.
Thank you so much. Huddle, mustard.
We have a good questionnaire on the floor.
Okay, gotcha.
Hit your speaker button. On the top right here.
I'm prepared to speak.
Yes, you can speak now, you have the floor.
Okay, so Councilwoman Graves just seconded the vote. However, it came up as a positive yes and she didn't vote.
Well, it will always come up as a green vote.
They always start with that.
And the mover, because you're just moving it.
But that doesn't mean you voted in favor of it.
That's why you can change it before the end of the end.
But she said, but she said if I don't change it, then it does take it as an affirmative.
That is correct.
So if I second something that I'm opposing, I need to make sure that I hit no, because otherwise just either no second or make sure that I record my vote properly.
It has also been said that there is, there has been a motion where a council member, not here, but in another city, that absolutely opposed it, but they needed to move it forward to vote down.
Okay.
So she said, I'm seconding this motion, but I'm not voting for it.
Gotcha.
He just made, even though he moved it forward.
How do you then get your vote opportunity back to say no?
You can still click on it.
Hit your speaker button.
Yeah, see that?
You can change it until he, until the...
My speaker...
That's why the mayor may have to...
We're in lunch.
See, that's what I'm saying. It just cut you off.
It just cut you off.
That's how we do it. So... Like standard parliamentary procedure, you shouldn't move your second and you shouldn't go in.
Oh, he can.
Okay. Interesting. Okay, that makes sense. That makes sense, okay.
All right. So, so are there any other questions for this, this?
Do another one.
Okay.
I just called, oh, no.
All right, let's just do...
PH, PH1.
All right, public hearing scheduled to stay under state law. Notice haven't been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to take care of a lease on property known as 240 East Main Street. You have your speakers lift.
All right, Mr. Sniggle.
No, no, this is speakers from the day, from the audience.
All right.
All right, and then after he's...
Oh, they're already going to be in here?
Have you want to speak?
No, thank you. They're already going to be in here?
No, they're, no.
I would like to speak.
Any comments from the council?
I, I just hit speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Adrian, Amy, we got four speakers. I got Tommy.
I never, I didn't hit speak.
That's from the last one. So I, I need to clear him out.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, you have to cancel.
I had to hit, I'm done speaking.
And you don't want to speak.
That was the first...
Everybody's clear it out. All right, now, so...
Clear it out, should it not?
He cleared us out.
I cleared you out. I took them off.
Yeah.
So if I don't want you to speak, I can clear you out.
Does that come with an electric shock?
Good luck shutting me up, okay?
Now, remember, we're going to, we're, we're, we are going to speak before we vote. Does it have any kind of conflict there?
So I can't get off this move and second business, you can't get to that?
Nope.
Alan has asked for the last seven months.
What was that?
Where?
So why do you have that feature to move in the second?
Follows Robert Jepson's rules.
Wait, wait, we follow Jepson's rules here.
Understand. Understand. It's with our product team reviewing that currently to see if there's something that we can do.
Please remove that, because we don't follow Roberts. We're just only in this.
I will let them know your...
Speak. So this is your chance to, to speak, I believe.
I hit my speaker.
You did. Maybe it's like you...
So I, I was the mover this time and it's on a yes vote for me.
Because you moved it.
Right.
But you can change your vote.
I can change it, yes.
Once it's done with the moving and the seconding, then you can change your vote.
Change it, okay.
Before he votes, you can change everybody.
So what will happen is I will ask...
Yeah, make sure you do it before the mayor.
Has everyone cast their vote?
Okay.
Does anyone want to change their vote?
No.
I will say clerk, call the roll. And that's what I'm doing.
But we don't have to call the roll anymore, do we? Do we, we don't have to call the roll anymore.
Slow your roll.
Close the roll. What'd you say, slow your roll?
We do call the roll only because when we sign these, it logs you in, we want to make sure you're there actually when the meeting starts.
Kenny's talking about that.
He's talking about another...
Close the roll means just no votes.
Close the roll.
And we're, mayor and I are going to work at the timing and all that, but as I said, we're going to meet again for 20-minute session.
Just give me some clues.
So everyone, when you leave, just get up and leave.
We'll take care of all of the equipment for you and everything.
So the vote results we can see, but, and you can scroll through the vote results.
Where?
Over there.
Oh, vote results, okay. I see that.
So Alan?
I'm the one who has to decide whether it's passed or not. Whether it requires super authority. And if I don't know, then somebody will have to tell me. That's not very efficient.
It'll be on, it'll be on all the screens.
It can't be on my screen?
It is on your screen.
No, it's not. They're telling me I don't get to see your vote.
You don't get to see the vote results?
That may be a good thing.
There's only one screen and it's behind us. Will he be able to turn and look at it?
He'll, he'll...
It would seem to me to be more efficient to have it on my screen.
If it's right there, I agree with you on that one, Bernard.
Thank you.
I think this is, I think this is going to be great after we get a few tweaks.
Sure.
May I, may I ask though, one of the tweaks I think we brought up is in the description of the item, if it could correspond to the actual agenda item as we see, whether it's R1, CH1.
Yeah, this is just a test. Okay.
So you'll put that in.
Bernard, you want to vote?
Thank you.
I do not want to vote. I think I change the rules.
So we're going to, we're going to come around and collect these now so that Mr. Smith can start his...
We're just having fun. No more, no more.
And we're always available for...
No more, no more.
One more. Maybe we want another one. All right, one more.
We're not taking these with us. These will stay at our home.
This is a...
One more, you ready?
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, PH2.
Okay.
Consent agenda. Taking off the consent agenda is an illegal agenda.
Adopt the consent agenda.
So we need to, so we can call for the vote.
Somebody just move a second.
Mine isn't on the right page.
All right.
All the members voted?
So what happened to mine? I know, but why would mine come up on the consent agenda?
Mr. Riddick, Mr. Riddick.
You were on this page.
Mr. Riddick, please vote.
There you go.
Does anyone want to change your vote?
That's the one that's the consent agenda, yeah, that's it. It doesn't come up individually.
But it didn't come up at first.
Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Agenda adopted. What's in, you'll have yours.
You can see, they have it highlighted in the title, so it's going to go centered on the title.
And what will it show on the back screen?
This.
So did y'all see that? We'll actually have our pictures with us, yes or no. And Bernard, are you going to see that?
Yeah. You'll see, the, the monitor's up there tonight.
Yeah, let me see my picture.
I mean, I look 10 years younger. I like seeing on my screen. Request that tweet.
There's nothing by yourself.
I don't think we need to have our voting done like... Bernard, I made the same general assembly where it just pops up. I went through trading. And can we just have it like where it just pops up? No, no, I want it to be where, we're sorry. You can see it come up like as people vote. That's what I want to see. I don't want that. I would say I want it like...
Three.
We would never, we would never...
You gotta guess and pick some, take, you gotta get some tweets out. I would choose all these.
I want to be able to, I want to be able to change my vote from one to the other.
By, by moving it, I just would never move.
Alan, I, I, I want to...
I thought the mayor and vice mayor should always move in second. I guess it's always.
I want to hit speak. I'm not ready to...
I mean, that should be one of the perks of being the vice mayor. You hit the push button.
They just kicked you out.
I'm supporting it. Second or first.
There's going to be an article written about all of our little comments.
I hit the speak button.
Oh my God.
She can do the honorary moving.
We can have her do the mover.
All right, what time we got here? 4:30, Mr. Manager, showing us we're ready. Are we ready to go live?
Mr. Smith, welcome. Nightmare.
Sir, I don't know much about Granicus. What I do know is we will not be using it until after you have adopted the budget.
So we will have that vote the old-fashioned way. All right. So I'll run you through the agenda real quick, which is Mary Miller, whom everyone knows as President and CEO of Downtown Norfolk Council, is here with some of her board members and is going to talk to you about the DIG renewal. Many of you have been through this process five years ago, but we're talking about 2019 as a time, and that's on your agenda for May 14th. So she'll come up and chat with you about that and a couple of tweaks that they're going to make or suggest that you make relative, very modest to the boundary and some things we're going to do around economic development. Jared Chalk, I got my development director, is going to jump up after that and talk about incentives for the Neon District. We've talked a lot about those, talked a lot about those with the Downtown Norfolk Council and he'll take a few minutes to make some recommendations to you so we can get that button up. Then Richard Broad will step up and give you our recommendation for recycling, frankly, to continue the recycling program and take a few minutes and talk about that. And I know we've had some questions in here and the, literally thousands of people that are going to show up for the IKEA grand opening and Lori Crouch and Lieutenant Lovely are going to step forward and just tell you about the plan and just what you'd expect. I mean, obviously, we're doing a lot to get ready for that, but this is a tremendous deal for IKEA as well and, and they have done this before and they know what their system is and they've laid out some plans, but we want you to know what those are as we prepare for that opening next month. And then we've got one item for closed session and when that's done at 6:30, we'll slip upstairs. I'll make the, provide you all the budget proposal for the fiscal year 2020 and I will be done well before 7 o'clock and give you a chance to take a quick break and then come back for the 7:00 meeting. So with that said, I'm going to ask Mary Miller to step forward and talk to you about the...
And don't forget, you got a council adjutant today.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, good evening, Mayor and members of City Council and manager. I am joined this evening by Jim Woodford, who is our immediate past chair of the Downtown Norfolk Council Board of Directors and who also served as the Chair of our Steering Committee. No, it's okay, thanks, Kim. So, what is it? Oh, thank you, thank you. Am I? Sorry. So a little bit of background on the Improvement District. The original district was formed in 1999. It was when City Council ordained a 48-block area of downtown. And since 1999, when the first Improvement District tax was levied, the district has collected more than $31 million in taxes that have supported a lot of a significant number of initiatives in the downtown. The district was reordained by City Council in '09 and again in 2014, and as the manager indicated, it is set to expire this year in June of 2019. Since the inception of the district, it has been managed under contract to the city In accordance with our bylaws, we have 30 member boards, 16 of the members represent the DED, and 14 members represent the membership part of our organization, and our members serve staggered terms of three years. We also work very hard to make sure we have liaisons with other organizations, so we have liaisons to our board from Fest Events, from the Virginia Arts Festival, from Seven Venues, Visit Norfolk, and our Downtown Civic League, as well as the Freemason Civic League. Each year, the board approves a work plan and budget, and that is with input from staff and the Executive Committee and the board. And just a note aside, we also have a 501(c)(3) organization fund, which has allowed us over the years to do things and collect charitable contributions towards our Vibrant Spaces Program for a lot of the projects that we do in the Neon District and for Complete Streets. Slight history of the rate, you can see in 1999, it was at 24 cents per hundred for three months, and that was to get the district up and running. It then dropped to 20 for 24 months, 18 for the next basically four or five years, and then it's been at 16 cents per hundred since '09, with one penny since '09 being held by the city, and it is what you'll see later, but what has funded the Granby Arch Lighting Project, which will be completed this year. So our property classifications have changed over time. Today, the largest property classification does remain at commercial office space and retail and services being the next classification, mainly in part due to MacArthur Center. You can see vacant land at one, and residential rental has increased over time now at 15%. And our, the program expense and support and how our budget is allocated, about 50% of it, what you see is public service and hospitality, our flex team and our clean team ambassadors, that is, again, about 50% of our budget, so those are the operations side of our organization. Special projects of the work we do on Complete Streets, Neon District vibrancy is under that category, marketing, and now for the past two years, we've had that special category for Selden Market. So quickly, I'll go through our accomplishments over the past five years for the organization. This was a project that we were fortunate to partner with the City of Norfolk on. The city provided us with $50,000 worth of funding for Phase One of this wayfinding program. The Downtown Norfolk Council hired a consultant to actually do the design of the program, and then we managed the implementation of the program. We are continuing to work with the designer on continuing this program to extend it throughout downtown. We have, for a long time, been advocates of Choices for Mobility, so we have worked to fund Sherrill's on Granby Street, partnered again with the city on the Bike Rack Project. We're one of the original sponsors of the Pace Bike Share Program, so we signed on to that initiative for three years, and then last year, signed on to be a $50,000 sponsor for the Elizabeth River Trail. The board felt that that investment was worth it because it really will provide, be an economic development driver for not just downtown, but for the entire city. And then we launched in downtown the first parklet program. We still put one or two parklets out today, and then worked with our Complete Streets Committee to, on outdoor dining examples, and then worked with the city to draft what are in proposal form right now, but new outdoor dining guidelines for downtown. And then many of you obviously know that back in 2013, we moved the plot from what is now the main hotel site to the Neon District. It is currently on private property. We leased this property from the owner, and then we maintain and program this site. And then obviously, since, over the past five years, we've put a lot into artwork in the district. We have now over 30 murals in the district that we've worked to coordinate, either DNC is funded directly or is funded in partnership with property owners and/or with grants from other organizations. And then the Neon Festival, which this year in 2019 will be our fifth annual festival. It's a great way for us to show off the district and highlight the businesses there and bring all the arts organizations together. And then we do a Neon Holiday Market in December, so we've been doing that for about four or five years as well. And then, again, partnered with the city on a unique wayfinding system for the Neon District. It includes parking signage, so signage in like the Harrison Opera House Lot, the Chrysler Museum Lot, on the lot at the plot, identifying to people that those parking areas are available after hours. You'll see one of the traffic control boxes was wrapped in public art last summer, the Neon Cube at the intersection of Granby and Brambleton, and then the wayfinding signs that have changeable art panels in them at the bottom. So, and not pictured here are the glass discs that are in the sidewalk that provide wayfinding. We, as part of this project, did set aside a reserve for maintenance and updating of the changeable art pieces in that wayfinding signage. And then annually, we also allocate, set aside, over $50,000 for matching grants, our vibrancy grant program that we have in downtown. And then, of course, the Selden Market, which you all know much about. We are very happy that we are able to operate the market at a zero net budget for us, so we're able to collect obviously enough in revenues to offset our expenses, other than staff time, but it's really, the activity in the market has really picked up. And then we do a lot of events to celebrate downtown. We do Employee Appreciation Week, which will be coming up in May, Random Acts of Kindness, so everything from serving lemonade to giving away popcorn on the street, a Healthy Downtown Initiative, so last summer it was running up and down the stairs at Harbor Park, but it's a way to get our residents and our work is to interact with one another. And then Restaurant Week, which we started in 2006, and this still is going strong. We talked to the restaurants about changing it up, but they want to keep it as it is. So we'll, we do it twice a year in July and then again in January. And then First Fridays, our first First Fridays will be coming up in about 10 days. We started this initiative in 2013. The season runs from April through October. And then we have worked with the city on parking initiatives over time, and then worked on a marketing campaign when parking hours were changed some time ago. And then our favorite thing, our dogs in downtown, I think the rental properties will tell us that about 70% of the renters in downtown have pets. This was a project that we obviously partnered with the city, Marathon Development, on to have the first dog park in downtown, and then DNC does ongoing maintenance to this park. We also worked to have a new marketing ad campaign to combat dog waste in downtown, and now have a dog advisory committee of residents in downtown to deal with all things dogs, so. And then, and in our social media, we've worked very hard to make sure that downtown's getting the attention it needs. We've seen since 2015, 171% increase in Facebook, a 47% increase in Twitter, and a 346% increase in Instagram, and this does not include Neon District or Selden Market, which also, they have their own social media channels. That's just our Downtown Norfolk channels. For those of you that have, receive our communications, you know we communicate a lot. We send out fast facts with weekly information about what's happening in downtown. We do Street Smarts when there are street closures or repaving, as we're going through right now on Bush Street. Neon District has its own newsletter, the DT 100 has its own newsletter, and Selden Market will also be, will also have its own newsletter. And then we also partner with the Greater Norfolk Corporation and other businesses in the community and the city to produce our Live NFK, the Norfolk Summer Career Launch Program. This summer will be our sixth year of doing this program, a program for college interns and summer associates. And then another publication we print is Downtown Data. It's a key indicators of activities in downtown and everything from vacancy rates to square footage rates, average rates, and this is something that our commercial leasing agents use. And then obviously, the operations team. We have our hospitality, our clean team and our flex team, which, flex team are ambassadors that are cross-teamed to either be hospitality ambassadors or clean team ambassadors, depending upon the needs of downtown. And then we also have Fred, which, on the left-hand side, which a lot of people, our favorite employee in our organization. And then advocacy. We have a bimonthly Property Managers Coalition. We bring people together in downtown to talk about interest and topics of interest to them, our restaurant coalition, and then work on advocacy efforts as, as needed. And then, as I already mentioned, the six, the one penny was used to fund this Granby Arch Light Project. And the last three arches are underway. Right now, the construction's ongoing, north of Volney Road. So where are we on the renewal recommendations? So there's a slight change, as the manager mentioned, to the boundary, and I have a map on the next slide, but it's basically to extend Duke Street south to Brook Avenue. And what that does is pick up two of parcels of the Heritage at Freemason Apartments. Right now, one of them is in. This would pick up the remaining two. The recommendation is that the rate maintain at 16 cents per 100. The length of renewal go to seven years. It's common practice now in our industry of downtown management organizations that it be seven to 10 years as the organizations have matured. And then the one service that we're recommending be added to the organization is to work on economic development, and this is not in any way to replicate what the city is doing from economic development, but to create a position that would have the ability to be totally focused on downtown, so mainly be responsible for data collection, research, so that we would have absolutely at the top of our fingers, anything and everything about downtown at our hands, and then to also establish strong relationships with our businesses in downtown to be able to do strong business retention and also be help with problem solving as well. And then, as necessary, support whatever city initiatives that, or recruitment that the city may be going after to attract businesses to our downtown. So this would be creating a new position in the organization. And then this map, on the, highlighted on the left-hand side in a slight brown tone, you will see the other two parcels that would be included in the change in boundaries. That's it.
Mary, thank you very much. Kim, if you don't mind putting Slide 31 back up, which is the recommendations, maybe we have them while you all chat or ask questions, but just want you to know, we're a staff fully supportive of the recommendations that she's put forward to you all. This will come to you all on the 14th. We've had a chance to sort of walk all through this, very supportive of the move, and Ms. Doyle and I have talked about this a lot, the move into economic developments. I think the things that they want to do are very complimentary of the things that Jared and his staff do, so we are obviously appreciative of DNC. And I told Mary a couple of weeks ago that when I, when I got here, there, you know, we were drinking out of a fire hose, and there were certain things that were just humming, and we stayed out of, stayed out of them. So one of them is, it's been a pleasure to know the DNC had their work running well and smoothly, and we're certainly appreciative of that, but certainly we recommend everything she's put in front of you all today.
Thank you. Jared?
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. To piggyback off what Mary said about the Neon District, we've been working really closely with DNC on Neon District incentives. So I want to run through some of the goals and objectives, talk about the state incentives. So this is a state incentive that we are tapping into, some of the eligible businesses, current incentives in the Neon, and then a recommendation. So, you know, one of the goals and objectives of, of this is to reinforce arts and design, so really create that cultural and entertainment sort of catalyst in the Neon District, ensure that we're supporting incentives that support these uses, ensure that live workspace is supported by city ordinances, and encourage ground floor uses that involve art and that are pedestrian friendly. Also build the economy. So arts and arts organizations are a key element of economic development, tourism, destination promotion, those are things that we want to encourage. They bring people to downtown, they bring people into Norfolk that spend money. So grow in the tax base, encouraging potential owners and making owners aware of this incentive program, and achieving full occupancy in the district. So we've got some vacant spaces, we want to ensure that, that it's 100% full. And so the state, state code allows by ordinance localities to have specific incentives for arts districts, and the purpose of this is to increase awareness of the arts and support for the arts. So the incentives that we're talking about here are really all arts focused. So they're for businesses that are either digital arts, culinary arts, visual arts, those types of businesses. This doesn't apply to every type of business that's out there. And you'll see, here's Virginia Beach, Williamsburg, and Richmond, some of the uses that they have identified that they would support. We're working right now on our list of the types of businesses that we want to support. So, you know, you can see art galleries, crafts, the culinary arts, digital arts, there's some, some discussion there whether sort of IT firms that, would they qualify under digital arts? So we're, we're working through that. But again, you can see they're all arts-related type businesses. This also, the Neon District has current incentives in place. So the tax abatement program works for any business citywide. The Auto Row Historic District is an overlay district that's, that's in this area, so they get state and federal historic tax credits for building rehabilitations. The tech trail incentives, which we brought to you several weeks ago, also is an overlay on the site. And then our cap program, so the recently announced Development Cap Program that we've rolled out, they also would qualify for all the businesses. And then DNC has two grants, the Vibrant Spaces Program and the Public Art Grant Program that also apply in this area. So what we're recommending, and really what we're trying to do is, is give some meaningful relief to some of the small arts organizations that really don't impact the city budget. So we're wa, we're recommending that we waive the 100% of the permit fees for building electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and, and site plan application in the district. We're also recommending that we provide B-Pole relief with no minimum investment, so 100% in the first two years and 50% in the third year. And B-Pole, it's based on gross receipts of the business, so it can eat anywhere from $50 on up. And so with that, we're recommending that council establish the Downtown Arts and Cultural District and provide incentives for the support and creation of arts and cultural businesses in the district.
On the B-Pole for the first two years, usually a business is not at the $100,000 mark, so it's just a flat $50 fee. In that 50% for a year, for the third year, are we, are we keeping that flat $50 fee if they're under $100, or are we charging them $25, or what are we doing there?
It'd be 25, based on, based on this.
Alright, thank you.
Mayor, if y'all are supportive, we'll bring this, what we find of eligible business types and get it on your agenda as soon as, perhaps at the same time as we do the DED approval.
Ms. McCullough?
I just wanted to thank Jared. I really wanted to thank Mary, Rachel, and your team. This is, and Councilwoman Doyle and I have been talking about this, and this is something we really need to do. We did a great job. Y'all did a great job, it was before my time, launching the Neon District and supporting it, and it's, we need to give it some more love and some more attention now. It's gone a couple of years, and I think we need to get reinvigorated and provide the incentives there. We're hearing that from the business owners, and this would be a great way for us to do that. So really, thank you for bringing it to our attention, and I'm sorry we haven't gotten it sooner, but I think we are supportive of it.
Alright, thank you, Jared. Ms. Graves?
So, quick question on the fees and permits and revenue. What are we, you saying waive 100% of the fees? What, what does that number look like? What did we issue?
Jared and I were chatting about this. For a, I, I'm gonna tell you that for, I'm gonna give you a general answer, and then what we'll do is give you a couple of case studies and say, hey, a business that looks like this would have these kinds of revenues.
Well, I mean, you can tell me, from the Neon District, if you had businesses that moved in and they needed to get permits, what did they spend? Right?
I can't, I can't tell you.
Right, but that's what I want, I want to know, like, what kind of numbers are we talking about? In terms of what has happened? So if we double what has already happened, what kind of revenue are we talking about giving away? And then what kind of revenue are the businesses that are there generating, and what do we look to, what are we expecting to get in terms of revenue back to the city?
And we'll get that for you. What I would say to you is, looking at Richmond and Stanton and now Virginia Beach and some of these communities, the revenues from our perspective are pretty modest. For the small business just going, getting going, they're, they're significant. So what I'm gonna tell you is, for a modest amount of money, we think we'll see some pretty big benefit, but we'll get you specific numbers on what you would have given on some of these businesses that have already moved in there.
Alright. Richard?
Good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. This evening, I would like to briefly provide some background on where we are in curbside recycling, present the results of the resident survey we did on recycling last month, and recommend the way forward. So I think you've seen this slide a couple of times in different formats, but summarizing, when China and other countries enacted strict restrictions on their contamination rates for imported recyclables, the market price for recyclables pretty much plunged. As a result, the city's recycling contractor opted to exercise their option to terminate their contract effective November 1st, 2018. They graciously agreed to extend the contract, and that extension ends March 31st. The city solicited bids, and we received two responses. The lowest bid would add about $1 million annually to the cost of our curbside recycling. And then, as I said, last month, the city launched, MarCom launched a recycling survey online. It was very popular. We got some very interesting results. So this is a graphical survey of, of the, of the survey results. So we got about 3,400 responses, and not surprising, about 97% of the people who responded actually participate in recycling already. So when we asked residents if they'd be willing to pay more to continue recycling, as a pie chart shows, 62% said they would. And the heat map in the upper right-hand corner, looks like the colors have changed since first put this up, so the, it shows the distribution of responses. So the darker colors show that more respondents, and the lighter colors, less responses. The bottom right-hand heat map in the table to its left showed the distribution of the citizens who said yes to raising, being willing to pay more for recycling, and it's broken down by ZIP code. You'll note that all the ZIP codes, except one, had more than half of the respondents say they'd be willing to pay more to continue curbside recycling. So staff's recommendation, based on these results and the two bids we received, is to award the contract to TFC. We would fund this in the remain, remainder of FY19 with fund balance, and then in the proposed FY20 budget, restore $2 of the $3 reduction that we recently gave back to the, for the refuse fee. Questions?
Ms. Graves?
Yes. I, looking at that chart of respondents, given our population size, I think that's a really low number. I would personally like to have the survey open back up for a couple of weeks to push it back out and see if we can get more responses to that, because I'm looking at some of the ZIP codes that are in my super ward, and those numbers are very, very low. And so I'd like to push it back out again and see what, and get some additional responses back.
Okay, Ms. McCullough?
So I think that's a good point, in terms of making sure folks have enough time. I think this was open for three weeks, two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, and typically, and I asked the question because I wanted to know, was, as a representation of online surveys that the city does, what do we typically get? Is it slow, is it high? And, correct me if I'm wrong, typically we get about 200 responses for the entire city.
it back out and see if we can get more responses to that, because I'm looking at some of the zip codes that are in my super ward, and those numbers are very, very low. And so I'd like to push it back out again and see what, and get some additional responses back.
Ms. McCullough?
So I think that's a good point, in terms of making sure folks have enough time. I think this was open for three weeks, two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. And typically, and I ask the question because I wanted to know, as a representation of online surveys that the city does, what do we typically get? Is it slow, is it high? And, correct me if I'm wrong, typically we get about 200 responses for the entire city. This is more than we've gotten for any survey in the past. And it was on Nextdoor, it was on the city's website, Facebook, Twitter, everything else.
It was pushed out by TFC, too.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but I'm saying the social, I mean, I know I did, I was trying to get response, so I actually, I don't, I'm not sure if having extended another two weeks, I think we've done what we needed to do.
Well, again, I'm just looking at the-
People can choose not to participate or not, but it wasn't-
They can. I just, in the interest of trying to be comprehensive, and we're talking, I mean, it's $2 and it doesn't make a hill of beans a difference to me one way or the other, I'm gonna pay the bill. But I would like the opportunity to just make sure that we are able to comprehensively cover the city and give everybody an opportunity.
Okay. All right. Any other comments?
But, well, absolutely, Ms. Graves, I had a chance to talk about that this afternoon, so MarCom's prepared to do that. But in terms of the recommendation we're making, we've got some timing issues. Unless somebody says something differently to me tonight, our intent is to award the contract, pay for the remainder of fiscal year 19 with fund balance, and you'll hear me tonight, make a recommendation for the $2 in the 20 budget, and obviously you'll have a chance to discuss that in the 20 budget, but we would execute the contract.
Is recycling still continuing at the schools? Everything's continuing?
What we want to do is continue what we already have. So if it's there now, schools, I think schools is managed under a different contract, I believe, because they're separate from the city.
I think it is managed separately. It's where it's done differently. That's always been a little vague to me.
Yeah. I think there's some, either-
Can I also stress that we do a review of our education of what we should be recycling as residents, so that we're using what is in the contract according to us, by household, I think it's a $2 per household, education fee, whatever. Whatever we're doing, we do better education in the community to students and to residents alike, so that we're doing better in our schools and that we're gonna be doing better in our homes, so that we know what we should be recycling and what we shouldn't be recycling. So I think education is key, and I would stress that as part of this rollout.
Absolutely. And one of the things you're gonna hear me saying in a few minutes is, now this in many ways is a temporary solution. This is a challenge for communities across this country in trying to figure out exactly the kinds of things you're talking about, what the permanent solutions are going to be, and frankly, we're gonna, y'all have heard me say this, we're gonna need to change some of our habits and choices and how we get, how we buy our goods and how we throw our goods away and all that. So I think that's a big conversation we'll be having in this coming year.
All right. Ms. McCullough?
I just, to echo what Port is saying, I mean, this is, I support this, but I do think that we can't stop here, that we have got to, as a community, do a better job of reducing the contamination, educating people on what they can do, what they can't do. And the city needs to walk the walk and talk the talk, and we need to do a better job recycling in our buildings, which we could improve upon, and reduce, reuse, recycle, and maybe having more of this and less of this water bottles.
We used to have that.
So, and we'll be talking about that when we present the-
Dr. Lindsay will give you an explanation of why we don't do-
We present the Climate Action Plan. When we present the Climate Action Plan next week, we're gonna be talking about that as one of the components, but yeah, we, you know, this is good, but this is a stopgap. So I think we all-
So in other words, we need to plan on how we're gonna educate, because we really do need to get the schools involved, because everything goes in one big can and in the dumpster.
Yeah, I think we can do a much better job in our school division through education and implementation.
Good luck. All right. Mr. Riddick?
Yeah. When it comes to educating the public, I think what we need to concentrate initially is on children. Because, you know, they are the ones who quite often are left in the kitchen and are doing, picking up different things. And when you get your children, your students and children involved in recycling, you're creating a new generation of people, you know, going to be recycling. When I was on the SIPs Board, you know, 100 years ago, I made that recommendation, Myra Opendahl was the chairman, but nobody filed up on it. If we get our children, you know, to concentrate on recycling, at our, let's say at our football games, and, you know, they have these hippopotamus-type trash cans for recycling and things like that, so this is where we need to concentrate, I believe, with youngsters, because we'd be creating future generations of recyclers.
All right. Thank you, Richard. Lori?
Lori Crouch.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council.
I am pleased to bring you up to speed on some of the exciting events taking place as we prepare to saw a log and officially open IKEA Norfolk. The IKEA team led by Charlie, General Manager Charlie Plisco, they have been absolutely amazing. We are collaborating at all levels with state and local partners to ensure not only a great grand opening day, but the following days and weeks are smooth as well. IKEA has teed up several invite-only test shopping and media events ahead of the grand opening day. I will tell you, you're going to need to prepare to rise and shine very early on the grand opening day on April the 10th. IKEA is expecting about 10,000 to 15,000 people on the grand opening day. They will open the parking lot at 5:00 a.m., and the festivities will start at 6:00 a.m. with entertainment. I hear there's a band. It's gonna be fun. The ceremony does start at 8:20 in the morning. I am pleased to share with you that the Lake Taylor High School Band will participate. They are going to play the National Anthem. And raising the Virginia flag is 90-year-old U.S. Marine Reserves and Korean War veteran Sergeant Miriam Trisciti. She is one of several women who are actually gonna be featured this year in the Virginia International Tattoo, which is honoring women who serve in the military. The ceremony will include remarks from our mayor and conclude with a traditional log song that, sir, I hope you know you are participating in. The store will officially open at 9:00 a.m. So the message really for the grand opening day is to come early and give yourself plenty of time. IKEA is making arrangements for shuttle service, and as I mentioned, this has been a super collaborative effort. Norfolk, Virginia Beach Police, Norfolk Traffic Engineers, State Police VDOT have all been working on a traffic plan that is going to keep people moving, so it's very exciting. And I'm gonna turn it over to Lieutenant Lovely, who will give you the details.
I appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. So I've been tasked with creating the traffic plan for the IKEA opening. Obviously, we're expecting the highest or heaviest volume of traffic opening day. We had a lot of lessons learned from the premium outlets opening, so we were able to apply some of that to this opening. But some of the challenges are, there's one way in and one way out. They are opening on a Wednesday, which means we are competing with rush hour traffic, morning and afternoon. So while we were able to, like I said, apply some of the things that we learned from the premium outlets, we understand we're gonna have some hiccups, but staffing-wise, what we decided to do is, we're gonna have an off-duty officer down here at USAA Drive. We expect a lot of heavy traffic down here, there's a commercial district back here, rush hour, morning and afternoon, it gets very heavy. So our goal is to make sure, to try to keep all the intersections as clear as possible. So we'll have an officer there. At the main entrance, we are gonna have three officers at this location, and then in the next slide, you'll see, every interstate exit, we will have an officer posted, and they're really gonna monitor what the traffic's looking like on the interstate. State Police has also assured us they're gonna have some additional officers up there to communicate with us if they have any backups or accidents. So with the three officers assigned at the front of the location, their primary responsibility is obviously to keep the intersection clear, keep traffic moving in and out. Now, IKEA's worked very closely with us, they have about 900 spots inside the location. If we start seeing heavy backups on Northampton, we will shut down the main entrance and we'll start directing people to the overflow lot, which is in the premium outlets. And that's even if they have available spots inside, that's just to help us clear that congestion. In the event that we do close the main entrance, IKEA requires, or they request, that any ADA customers still have access into the main lot. If you do use the shuttle and you purchase a large item, you will receive a pickup pass. We will still allow those folks into the parking lot to retrieve their items. So, moving down towards Wesleyan Drive, again, we have officers stationed at every one of the exits here. Down at Wesleyan and Northampton, we're gonna, this is a pretty beefy intersection, so we have three officers assigned here. We're still gonna have traffic trying to get into the premium outlets, we're gonna have backups. More importantly, this lane here, especially afternoon rush hour, we get a lot of backups. You know, all it takes is one accident or disabled vehicle and it's parking lot. So we're gonna make sure that we keep these intersections clear, push traffic as need be, and help direct folks to the shuttles in the back of the premium outlets. The next slide, you'll see the shuttle route, but back here at Miller Store and Pritchard, that's the exit where the shuttles are going to be leaving to take the passengers to the main entrance of the IKEA. So we've got two officers back there to help shuttle traffic get out. But additionally, what we learned with the opening of the outlets, we had some issues with airport traffic and the employees being able to get to the airport using Miller Store Road. So this will help, these officers will make sure that we're, they're clearing the congestion back there and keeping traffic moving. So in coordination with Virginia Beach, as you move eastbound on Northampton Boulevard, there's two median breaks before you get to Burton Station Road. We're gonna block those median breaks off, because what we don't want is vehicles trying to do a U-turn to get back into traffic and causing more of a congestion. Virginia Beach is gonna put an officer at Burton Station. Burton Station is currently closed for road construction, and it's closed about right here, because they still have access to these buildings. So they're gonna have officers there to make sure traffic's not trying to do a U-turn and come back out and create more congestion. And then the same down here at Baker Road. I don't foresee it being a very big issue down here, but they're gonna have two or three officers down there to monitor traffic and communicate with us as well. So IKEA is, they've contracted 30 passenger shuttles, 30 passenger vehicles, I believe they have, I think it's 30, 30 passenger shuttles, if that makes sense. So the route for the shuttles is gonna be, the overflow lot is back here, this rear parking lot, so we're gonna have the shuttles come out down Miller Store Road, down to Robin Hood, up Military Highway, back down Northampton, and the officers here again will make sure that the shuttles can get in, make it that left turn, and then they'll direct the shuttles back out down to Premium Outlets. Part of the reason we did this was, there's a lot of congestion here on the front end, this will be a quicker route for the shuttles to get out, so the customers feel like they're moving, and they're not continuing with all the speed bumps trying to get through the parking lot. There's also gonna be, one of the key things that we were really pushing for IKEA to do was adequate signage, to make sure that motorists were aware of where the overflow parking was, if there was any closures, you know, make sure we were directing people in the right direction. Because obviously, we know it's not gonna be just Norfolk residents here coming for the opening, it's gonna be residents from all over. So every one of these where you see the IKEA, there's gonna be signs of some sort directing customers where to go and directing to the overflow locations. So we know we're gonna have growing things with this, the first day, it's gonna be a little challenging, again, it's the middle of the week, but I feel like we have adequate staffing out there to address any issues that we have. We've also worked very closely with traffic engineering, they're gonna help us out with light timing and, you know, maximize the amount of vehicles we can push through the intersections at a time. Do you have any questions to me?
Yeah, Miller Store Road, what's the impact on that again, as far as the shuttles?
So, down here at Robin Hood and Miller Store, the airport has employee parking, and they actually shuttle their employees to the location. So when the outlets opened up, there was a significant backup on Miller Store from people trying to get into the outlets. So what we ended up having to do was put additional staffing out here to accommodate that traffic, so the employees could get to the airport. And, you know, we've built in a couple of extra positions in some of these locations, so if need be, I could potentially float an officer down here to Robin Hood and Miller Store to help that congestion at that location as well.
Reason I ask is because it was a tiny community, I guess it would be north of Miller Store Road that goes into Zay Garden Road, a lot of seniors, and sometimes they have difficulty getting out.
Yes, sir. And we're, if we see congestions back here, we're prepared to, we'll offer to address that.
Thank you.
Please.
Has that congestion worn, kind of worn off as the outlets have normalized, as the traffic has normalized?
Yes, ma'am. And that's partly because the outlets have two entrances, so people have learned of that rear entrance. We see a good amount of traffic utilizing both those ingresses and egresses. Again, with IKEA, we don't have that luxury, it's one way in, one way out, so it's gonna be a little challenging.
Okay. Thank, Ms. Johnson?
I have a question. Lori, when you talked about Ms. Crouch, when you talked about the time, what's the correct time? On our calendar, it says 7:00 a.m.
So I'm working with the clerk's office to ensure that you all have the ability to get out there and onto the property in plenty of time for the start of the ceremony. I am concerned, even with my own team, we're going early just because of the, they're gonna have the lot open and traffic is gonna be moving in and around the area. I don't want you to miss anything.
And the officers-
I don't know what time, I'm working with Ellen on what time you all should be together, but the ceremony starts at 8:20.
Like 7:30, we should have assembled.
We're here.
We're here at 7:30.
And then go there, okay.
So I just wanted to, just, you guys know that I live all the way on the other side of the city, and this is how I drive to get to City Hall. So I don't know why we can't meet at a central location, like at a rec center or something. You're making everybody go to City Hall to catch a shuttle to take us over here.
That's true, because I live right around the corner.
All right, I mean-
Or Lake Taylor High School, or Northridge.
Not even Lake Taylor, but maybe something more like by Norview, like Norview Rec Center. But because if you try to get to this in that morning, that's gonna be difficult, that's why I'm just thinking-
How about if I ask Lori and Ellen and work together to find a spot?
Yeah, y'all figure it out.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, officer.
I'd love to thank you.
All right, Mr. Riddick, we have a few minutes for council concerns. We're gonna start with Mr. Alar Riddick.
Thank you. This is about the third time since we've had Doug here that we've had council concerns, and so I hope we have a sonographer to give us some answers. First of all, I want to thank John Ramstein and his staff for a successful MEAC tournament. I think things went off, from my vantage, went out of hitch, and I want to thank John and them for that. And Norfolk State University, although they did not win, they had a great presence and they did go to the NIT and had a pretty good success the first time. And then first, also, I'd like to thank all of our council members who attended the last St. Paul meeting last week. Ms. Graves was under the weather and she was not able to be there. But it showed the concern for the success or failure of this project, and it just felt good having everybody there, you know, geared up, ready to, you know, participate in a conversation. And Andrea had to put her boxing gloves on one time to shut a woman down, but she did. Tommy-
Who needed to be.
Yeah, yeah. Tommy was not there, but I'm sure he's interested, because Pleasant Avenue will soon be a topic of discussion. Same thing we do in Uptown.
I had an event at my daughter's school, but I'm planning on going to that.
In regards to Coach's Corner, I'd like for all of the council members who plan to attend our initial meeting, which would be on the 6th of April, be prepared to speak to the youngsters and let them know how committed you are, you know, just a little pep talk. Tommy, you need to figure out how we can work with the people in your side of town who want to get involved with the same thing of the Ocean View Rec Center. I saw the Ocean View Rec Center recently on the news, and they were very enthusiastic, and they got a lot of people out of there. In regards to the real serious stuff, I'm still extremely concerned about the traffic and the high rate of speed by some motorists. I still say that our biggest offenders are HRT bus drivers, school bus drivers, our city trucks from various departments, as well as tractor trailers trying to get back and forth to the port and to the Midtown Tunnel. Black contractors are not having access to the gym lines, as well as other city projects. It seems to be a slowdown when it comes to blacks doing business with the city. And I was just scratching my head, and I go all the way back to Thomas Maxwell when he was there, city manager, and it looks like we're going back to the old days again. The grocery store in Berkeley and R.A. Tucker Library are still being overlooked. Now here's one thing that, and my last thing, in regards to Calvary Cemetery, Calvary Cemetery, there was a call about closing more grave, more roads to provide additional grave spaces. By closing the roads, it makes it difficult for- By closing the roads, it makes it difficult for seniors and disabled to visit graves of loved ones. One of the biggest fights that we had on this council probably before most of you got here, was when they tried to say they were gonna close some graves at Elmwood Cemetery. They had Norfolk Flower Club, Ladies of the Confederates, everybody in the world. And so, I just don't think that we can afford to close any grave spaces anymore in Calvary Cemetery. But one thing I would like for us to suggest is looking at an indoor mausoleum at Calvary. We're being very successful with the one at Forest Lawn, and so there's a thought of one also at Calvary. And one thing I'd like to suggest is that we start accepting prepayments of opening and closing of grave spaces. Doug, right now, you know, you can, a lot of people don't know that you can put a contract, you're fifty dollars and you can put a contract on a grave at Calvary, not Calvary, at all of our cemeteries, and have two years to pay for it with no interest. When I first became a member of council, if you lived outside the city, you had to pay twenty-five percent more. Well, we broke that up and we created this department where people can, you know, buy spaces on installments with no interest. And a lot of our citizens don't know that. And if we do the same thing with opening and closing of the graves, then I think that 'd give us a windfall as far as, you know, monies are concerned, and that's put in a perpetual care, it's not able to, you know, to spend it. And as far as our cemeteries are concerned, in Norfolk, we really have the best deal going because we don't have salesmen, you know. We have people who are working from nine to five and they're not making a commission on selling grave space and not make a commission on selling mausoleums and all that kind of thing. So, I think we need to kind of realize that that's a jewel that we got that we can work on, and that's all that I have.
All right, Mr. Johnson.
Also, to address the cemeteries as well, maybe a year ago, in my writeabout, we had lots of discussion on identifying graves and that we have graves through, I have one in my ward in Oakwood.
Graves outside of our cemeteries.
Yes, and I got a call from a constituent for something else and walked across the street in this tall wreath and found headstones that dated back an extended period of time. And so, we're not sure, well, we know that it doesn't belong to the church, we do know that part of it, but they've been so gracious to meet us halfway and take care of it, but a report was never done on where we are with identifying some of these grave sites throughout our city. So, I would like to have a report on where we are with these cemeteries that are near churches, but it's not on church ground and are in lots next to houses in our city. We have a couple of them, a lot of them.
Yeah, Mamie, I think I told you...
And your students cleaned up that area?
Fifteen years ago, we cleaned that cemetery up, we planted trees in it and found that nobody had ownership, and still to this day, there's none. But I have a group of students at my school now that are taking that on as a project and are gonna be meeting with city folks to try to see if the church there will want to take ownership or if it can come under the City of Norfolk cemeteries, but there's still actually space there for more graves. It could become a nice little cemetery for the community, but also, are there other graves under there that are not marked?
There are, there's another one adjacent, it's just a lot. And there were headstones there that date back for an extended period of time and the Department of Neighborhood Development did the walkthrough with me and had been working on exactly what to do as far as this cemetery is concerned and the community of Oakwood.
How does nobody own it? I mean, how does nobody own it?
I think really, I think around ninety-seven, it was determined that Mount Gilead owned that, you know, that cemetery. I think Phil Japanna was the lawyer then and he explored it and came out that Mount Gilead does own that cemetery and there are some available spaces there.
Well, we need to partner up with Mount Gilead.
Ms. Graves and Ms. McCullough.
I got one more. Also, recently, we had, the city does their senior citizen tax relief and we provide work sessions. I really want to thank Team Norfolk in their efforts to providing the number of work sessions for the senior citizen tax relief. But one of the things that I really had to do was to, when something is great as this that has an impact on all of our citizens, we need to plan for the entire community and it was not planned for the entire city. But Team Norfolk stepped in. I could not speak for Mr. Riddick and Councilwoman Graves, but I'm sure, well, I won't speak for them either, but we have to provide sessions from the entire city. So, for, at Jordan Newby, there are gonna be two sessions for an hour and a half, and at Norview, there's one date set aside. When we're planning these sessions, I think that we need to balance it out across the city so that everybody will have opportunity to attend many sessions to help with the senior citizen tax relief because it is big. And so, I am aware that the South Side and Super Ward Seven as a whole is not covered as far as the senior citizen tax relief.
Timing's great. One of the things you're gonna see me talk about in a few minutes, we'd like to tell you kind of what we did last year, what we're gonna work on next year and the senior tax relief program process, all that is one of the things we think we can do better.
And thanks again to Team Norfolk for being able to put in some more dates to be able to cover the entire city. I appreciate it.
All right, Ms. Graves and Ms. McCullough.
I want an explanation on R seven.
R seven, Harbor's Edge. You wanna get to council concerns, you want me to jump into that, how do you wanna...
Let's get to council, Ms. Graves, is that okay? Finish, get to the agenda, okay? All right, all right, Mr. Riddick, you good?
Yep, good.
Just a point of order, I didn't know we were in half council concerns, it wasn't on the agenda. I would have prepared something to do that, I think that it's a great thing to do it, I think we need to have the opportunity to discuss amongst ourselves a variety of issues. It's very important, we talked about doing that, we have done it, so I appreciate where Mr. Riddick is, he came prepared. I just don't think it's, I think the rest of us are sort of caught off guard and I would like for this to become a regular thing on our agenda. We can set some ground rules on how much time each of us has because I know that we have limited time, but, you know, I think this is a great thing, I'm just frustrated because I think we're all looking around going, council concerns, we're council concerns. So, if we could make this a regular thing and give us some advance notes, that would be great and maybe set some ground rules.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Riddick would love to prepare.
Well, dino is an option.
I can always make up stuff. I do have something.
I'd rather explain ourselves.
So, road resurfacing, I'm very happy to see that Tidewater Drive is being resurfaced. I have no clue who is coordinating it, but it has been unorganized, there was no warning about this section being resurfaced, and there was a period of days where they started and they took the lines out, and then there was no temporary lines put in, and Mr. Riddick has, how many years, has talked about the narrow lanes on there, but the amount of potential accidents that have probably could have happened, I don't know, they may have happened because there were no temporary lines. I don't know who the contractor is that's working on this, but they just stopped, there was nobody working on this for two days, but according to multiple people, nobody, there was no warning signs for a major corridor. And this is all the way from, I think Walmart now, I mean, there's different sections all the way to Lafayette, but, I mean, everybody's posting about it, and then all of a sudden there's a new warning about asphalt that's being placed under the Tidewater Drive underpass, which we just spent six million dollars overhauling that, and so now citizens are asking, why is another four hundred and fifty thousand, which is the estimated budget on this, being spent on putting asphalt on top of cement, which we were told by engineers that that's one of the problems we have on a lot of our roads, is that we put asphalt on top of cement? So, I don't, it says it's for safety reasons, but a lot of people are asking, why wasn't that just done? And that was a state matching grant, so it was like three million from the city and three million from the state on that, but now another four hundred and fifty, because what citizens are asking is, there's so many roads in Norfolk that need resurfacing, why are we spending four hundred and fifty thousand on our roadway that's just been done that has new cement on it? But I'm very happy to see, please, don't get me wrong, and I looked up last night on Public Works website and I saw the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty road resurfacing plan because I was getting ready to email Pete and Richard about Old Ocean View Avenue, which I counted twelve potholes on, but it looks like they're out there marketing now, getting ready to grind it down on this. But we, and I brought it up with my budget conversation as well, that our roads are deteriorating so fast in Norfolk and we're not keeping up with it, that I'm hoping that in this budget that you have added more money into it for road resurfacing. Little Creek Road is in awful shape, Azalea Garden Road is in awful shape, some of these roads, and I travel all the time and I've seen this, and then we've had, like I said, Dominion, I mean, not Dominion, Virginia Natural Gas has come in and tore up some of these roads and they patched them, but I think, Doug, we've gotta do a comprehensive look and I know you guys are gonna try to do a road system resurfacing just like you do with the CIP stormwater projects, but until then, we've gotta, the patching is not working on some of these roads, I just, but whatever happened with Tidewater Drive, we need to get, figure out, there was a, there was no notice on it. I was completely blindsided by this, there were no, usually there's signage up, I didn't see any signage on this. Maybe it's because we came in with some extra money, so we had to move quickly on it, but it's such a major corridor for us to have to do this, it's inconvenience a lot of, has anybody experienced Tidewater Drive with, since this resurfacing?
It is road resurfacing because everywhere that I drive, there seems to be a road that's ramped up right now, right here, down here lately, I mean, but the good news is, we need this done, so I'm happy about that, but I think there's some, I don't know...
Traffic's been backed up literally from Lafayette Boulevard, or I wouldn't say Cromwell, I'll be a little bit generous, all the way to the Walmart, if you can imagine that underpass and full street because of no, there was no direction to tell people to use Granby Street or an alternative during this period of time.
Let's do this, I'll look at Richard, but for your Friday packet, if this works for you, we'll put sort of an explanation of what's happened here lately, what's going on, kind of answer some of your really specific questions, take a look at that, and if you feel like we need to have a conversation Tuesday night, explaining what you get Friday, we'll do that. Does that, does that work for you?
Thanks.
One more. I'm sorry, I just wanna echo Mr. Riddick's sentiments in terms of thanking the council members for coming out to the St. Paul's quadrant meeting, to say I was under the weather is an understatement, but I'm thankful to be back and I appreciate all of you all who showed up and to the staff who worked so quickly to get everything rearranged and in place to make sure that the meeting went off without a hitch, so thank you.
Okay. Mr. Thomas or Mr.... All right, Mr. Paul.
I move that members of the council assembly...
Before we go?
You want me to talk about R seven, you wanna do it up front?
Oh, yeah, R seven, yes, I mean...
Just do it here, since you're, yes, I'm sorry.
You're talking Harbor's Edge, right? Okay, so, quick, and I'll ask Jared or Michelle, if they're here, to chime in where I missed, but this is the item on your, with the continuing care facility, Harbor's Edge, this is phase two.
Why are we giving them money?
So, remember, this was a conversation we had in closed sessions, when I'm walking through the request for you all, this is essentially an extension, expansion from phase one. We changed this relationship, I think there was an expectation that we would be asked to support phase two. If you remember, in phase one, we did a pilot, the payment of lieu and taxes, and this past time, what we talked about was rather than doing that, we wanted to have that money flow back into the community. So, rather than a pilot, we're doing a grant. That grant would be for five years to cover their debt service, excuse me, cover their cash flow shortfalls for their debt service coverage. And so, in order for them to get their financing, they needed support from the city in the form of this grant. And so, what we did, it's different this time, is once those payments are made, that money will come back, and this was Mr. Riddick, helped us think through this, would actually go back into their foundation and flow into the community through support for senior housing, with an emphasis frankly on St. Paul's, but an ability for that money to be spent citywide. And if you remember in your packet, you'll see the, you all get to put a member, a director, on the foundation, you all have control in terms...
I'm sorry. Okay.
And I said, if I'm missing anything, I'd ask you or Michelle to...
Yep, we don't have the ability to put a director on the foundation.
Then, I'm looking at Michelle.
Her email to me.
Michelle.
She's not here.
I've got the draft here.
So, we'll clarify that, but that's, the draft I had, had that in there, we talked about that.
The foundation bylaws, they're gonna be changing their bylaws.
Right.
To add a member, so we will...
For the city to appoint a member to the foundation.
So, can you...
Foundation board.
We need to...
We'll clarify that before...
Clarify that and before we get upstairs, can we get that answered?
Sure.
Go ahead, continue.
All right, and so that's sort of the mechanism, you're talking about a facility, I'm doing something up ahead, a hundred and fifty million dollar construction, Jared, ninety new jobs, average salary of forty-three thousand dollars, and over time, once the, we get through this grant phase, you'll generate about two point four million dollars a year in revenues from the project for, for the...
What for this project, those taxes were not realized?
That's correct.
Okay, I guess I just don't understand why they're getting financing and they still need city help in order to get their financing, why can't the deal stand on its own two feet?
This was, because in order to sell their bonds, they needed a certain debt service coverage, and their performer did not generate that amount of money, so we were backfilling, we're backstepping that. Hey, so a question, we talked a little bit about today, I'm sorry.
Hold on, their performer doesn't generate...
That's right.
The lead at seven million dollars.
In the first five years.
In the first five years, so we're giving it to them.
That's correct.
But we're giving it back.
That's correct, but then they, the difference is...
How are we getting it back?
So, that money flows back from Harbor's Edge through their foundation, which will be put back in the community for supporting senior housing in Norfolk. It's not coming back as cash, it's coming back...
I think we need to distinguish the phase one pilot where that money did come back versus this...
Right, that money didn't come, so that money was a reduction, and I wasn't here for phase one to burn me clean this up, but the payment in lieu of taxes was less than they would have paid in taxes, right? So, that subsidy simply was a subsidy. In this case, that money will come back, the money that we put in will come back into the community through the foundation as support for senior housing.
But when you say come back to the community, for me, I need clarity on that because if this is a citywide, a council decision, then the question becomes, how will it come back to the city when we say we're gonna address senior housing? Who makes that decision? And is it, are we saying that it's going all to St. Paul's or are we including the entire city? Because, and Mr. Riddick, maybe you can clarify what you suggested as well.
I think, I think what I said was, when they built Westminster Canterbury, it took a portion of their initial money and put it in a foundation. So, then, let's just say, for instance, if you had... So then, let's just say, for instance, if you had someone who had a shortfall, reckless citizen, and they were able to get into Westminster Canterbury, you know, using that shortfall. In this particular instance, if you might have somebody there and the family might run out of money, you know, and that money will help them to continue to be there.
And I thought that that's exactly what I heard Mr. Riddick say, that let's just say there were, that there be available spaces for ordinary citizens to possibly live at Harbor's Edge, Mr. Riddick?
But let's say, for instance, just an example, let's say, for instance, you have somebody that might be living in Stormwater, some neighborhood where they could sell their homes and realize $350,000, $400,000, but they might need another, you know, boost, you know, to get them in. This would, that money from the foundation would help somebody who needed a help, you know, a lift up to get in there.
Gap.
Yeah, it's a little gap filler, yeah.
All right, Ms. McCullough, and I'll go back to Ms. Johnson if you're not clear with Ms. Graves.
So as I understand it, because I've asked a lot of these questions as well, I was concerned where that $7.5 million was going to go. I think it's very important. So I wanted to determine what the ability of the foundation was there. It's serving, it's meant in the bylaws to serve underserved communities and not to build housing, but to provide scholarship or assistance to other, it doesn't have to be Harbor's Edge. This is also very important. It could be anywhere. In Norfolk, quite honestly, Hampton Roads, but all underserved communities. And what I asked for, which is, which we don't typically get, I want an annual accounting of where those dollars go. If you say you're going to do it, let's see where it goes and let's see how it's spent. So that's been added to the amended agreement, because I think, I think we should, we should have that. And having a seat on the foundation board, I think, is very important. I mean, all in all, this gets to what we're trying to do. We're trying to help seniors throughout Norfolk. So I think this is a much better deal than anything we've done before. But we just have to tighten it up a little bit.
But you said our $7 million could go anywhere, including all of Hampton Roads.
No, I think they tightened it up to only.
Their documents would be that way, but we said they could only be used for current residents of the city of Norfolk, so.
And in the city, they'd have to also reside in the city as well?
They have, yeah, it would, yeah, it's for residents of the city of Norfolk. And if they happen to be in Harbor's Edge already, so they ran out of funds, it would be for people who had lived in Norfolk prior to their admission to Harbor's Edge. So it is limited to residents of Norfolk.
But they could, they could be residents of Norfolk and then move to a care facility that's in Chesapeake or Virginia Beach.
I don't think it would stop that, as long as they were residents of the city when they were served with these funds. But we can, I mean, if the preference would be that it's for facilities within the city, we could add that as well.
It seems to me that that would, putting that limitation of the Norfolk City.
It should be for, it should, it should be for Norfolk residents where we're using.
Well, it's clearly Norfolk residents, but I think the question is, do you want it to be Norfolk residents that are staying in a facility in Norfolk? And I think that's.
I would agree to that.
Okay.
It's not worth it. I would agree to that.
Yeah.
And Michelle, the council has the ability to appoint a member to the foundation.
There are currently four members on the board. We have requested the ability to appoint one of those.
We've requested it, but it's not.
It's in the agreement.
There's a draft since the last one, I guess.
No, it's been in there since the first draft.
Okay, all right, any other? Okay, Mr. Bull. Easy, let's go.
No, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Bull.
I move that members of the council assemble in a closed meeting on March 26, 2019, at 5:44, the 10th floor conference room of the City Hall of City of Norfolk, the purpose of clause seven, sworn as sub-section A, section 2.2, that is, of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended, clause seven, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to probable litigation in the Curly Drive area of the city. Ms. Doyle.
Aye.
Ms. Graves.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. McCullough.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick.
Aye.
Mr. Snigel.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Michelle.
All right.